So, thank you for your patience. Sorry for the delay. I would like to call this May 10th meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to order. I think we, first item on the agenda is to approve the electronic participation request, and I think we go to Ms. Reed first for that.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. I am requesting that I attend the May 10th, 2021 Rockingham County School Board meeting virtually due to personal reasons. I am currently in the state of Florida providing caregiver assistance to my mother. I've also asked Ms. Lohr to chair tonight's meeting.
Thank you, and you have provided that to me in writing as required. So now we just need a motion to the fact.
I move to approve Ms. Reed's request to participate electronically in this, the May 10th, 2021, meeting of the Rockingham County School Board, in which a quorum is physically present, given the reasons provided in her written notice and as shared audibly by Ms. Reed just now this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Now we need to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
A move that we approve the agenda is presented.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, we've come to the portion of the meeting for publics from the, or comments from the public. We have one person signed up, Chelsea Wine. You can come up to the podium and speak.
This evening, I do have questions regarding the 21-22 school year. I'm curious, what is going to be done for our children required to wear masks? Is that going to be an optional option for us, as well as vaccines for our children in the upcoming school year?
Thank you for your comments. Generally, we don't get into a back and forth. I think the superintendent's office will likely contact you tomorrow unless, Dr. Scheichel, would you like to?
If you would like to, I have a presentation on the agenda today about COVID update. If you want to stay for that, I'll address it there.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make public comments this evening? Thank you. We'll now move on to highlights by board members, and I think I'm going to start with Mr. Falk.
Thank you very much. It's good to see everyone here this evening. Thank you for coming out, and I'll just pass on highlights.
Thank you. Dr. McWilkin?
Oh, yes. Earlier this week, we read something to, for teacher appreciation, and so I'd like to show my appreciation with, with a feeling of gratitude and not expressing it is like wrapping a present and not giving it. And so tonight, my word is gratitude. Gratitude for teacher appreciation for, that was held this past week. We thank you, teachers. Next is appreciation for nurses, because the nurses, this is, this is Nurses Appreciation Week, School Nurse Appreciation Week, and International Nurse Appreciation Week, and so we thank our nurses. And I believe later in the agenda, Mr. Lehman will be talking about food and nutrition service staff and talking about school lunch hero day and appreciation. And the last person, or the last grouping, is the entire Rockingham County Public School staff. We appreciate all of you, all staff. And then this morning in the DNR, I hope everybody had an opportunity to see this. This, these are the awards that are given. They're called the Harrisonburg Rotary Honors 33, 73 for integrity. The area students receive Code of Ethics Award. This is an annual award, and we're thrilled to be able to have our students participate along with the other, the students at other schools in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would like to join you in thanking everyone, Rockingham County Public Schools. This certainly has been a difficult year, so thank you for your appreciation. Mr. Breeden?
Just as a, as a matter of housekeeping, the reason we don't do back and forth exchange during public comments is not because we don't want to answer, it's because often we have several speakers, and for time, we've just set the policy of that. In between the public meeting and going back into closed session, if you're here then and you want to talk, I mean, I'll, I'll be glad to hang around and, and see, but some of those decisions may yet to be, may be yet to be made, and Dr. Scheichel's office is going to be the best source for that. So just, just as a matter of housekeeping, my comments tonight beyond that are, are not of a highlight, but that I did want to publicly, on behalf of the board, express our condolences to the family of Bonnie Munger. Bonnie's a longtime employee of Rockingham County and a longtime employee at Elkton Middle School. Those of us who were privileged to know her, both inside her schoolwork and outside, have suffered a tremendous loss, and we will miss her infectious smile and the warmth and professionalism that she brought to her job. Even though I've known her and Larry, her husband, for some time, as a member of the school board, even if we met in Food Lion, she would call me Mr. Breeden. She would never refer to me as Dan, because she, that was her professional, her professionalism at work. So to Larry and Stephen and Bradley and everybody who knew Bonnie Munger, heaven is brighter tonight, but we're much worse off.
Thank you. Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Many thanks to my colleagues for letting me do this virtually. That lifted a little bit of a burden for me, and a choice between being here and being there. So I greatly appreciate Mr. Perkins helping me work out the technology. Never would have thought, two years ago, we would be able to do something like this. So it's, it's, you know, that technology that we can be grateful for, probably one of those positive things that have come from the other side of COVID. Mr. Breeden, thank you for speaking so eloquently about Ms. Munger. She definitely was a bright star for Rockingham County schools, and, and I appreciate you sharing that with us tonight. Lots of good things going on in Rockingham County schools, and sports, some of them wrapping up, some of them in the middle, getting close. Our seniors are excited. Looks like graduation will be all set. We'll keep our fingers crossed for good weather in a couple of weeks. So I'm looking forward to, as we round out the, the school year, where we are going to be, and then looking forward to where we're going to be in the fall. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Dr. Scheichel?
In addition to saying thank you to Mr. Breeden for talking about Bonnie, who I've known for a long time as well, I do want to highlight two events. One, the Green and White Society induction happened at Broadway High School this past weekend. The Green and White Society is an event where students who achieve in a number of different areas and are recognized for their service mindset to the community, I'll also highlight a teacher or education staff who meant a lot to them in their life. And so, teachers oftentimes don't find out ever, or sometimes decades later, that a particular activity or how they treated a student made an enormous change. And so this is one of the instances where they find out right at that moment. And, you know, when you look at the students and the teachers, they exemplify all the things that we've talked about for a few years now. It's all about relationships, and it's about community. It's about having purpose in learning and, and also being really good at it. So the scholarship part, and it also is that civic mindset, right? So one example was an FFA student, right? And even in the FFA motto, you know, it's about learning to do, doing to learn, but then earning to live and living to serve. That's always one of my highlights, living to serve and doing things that we learn in the greater service of the community. And so, the Green and White Society induction is always one of the highlights, and I was privileged to attend. And then the second one is that today, the Rockingham Educational Foundation announced that Margaret Alger from Riverbend was selected as the Lucy Sims Educator of the Year. Sharon March made that announcement at a school-wide announcement, and I also wanted to highlight that here. And so there will be a small award ceremony, which is different this year just because of the restrictions, on Thursday, May 27th. So congratulations to Margaret and all the other teachers of the year at the individual schools that were highlighted. I'm at the last board meeting when the Educational Foundation presented information about their year and also about all the individual teachers of the year in the buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. And my highlight was I was able to go to Elkton, Elkton Middle School and see the musical. And at that point, they commented about how much they were missing Ms. Munger. So thank you, Dan, for, for your kind words about her. She definitely will be missed. But it was wonderful to see the students again, see the students performing. I was also able to see the Broadway High School musical. There's, I think, one more musical coming up this weekend. I think it can be livestreamed, so we're looking forward to that. But it's nice to be able to see the kids being able to do a little bit of what they, they've missed in the past. And so, and again, thanks to everyone, thanks to all of our teachers, our staff, everyone for working so hard during this, this unprecedented time. We will now move into minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Move that we approve the minutes is presented.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the bills. You have bill, you've received the, a copy of the bills and mileage in your packets. Do I have a motion to approve the bills as presented?
I move that we approve the bills as presented for April 2021.
Thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion on the bills? Hearing none, we will vote. All those, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Vice Chair Lohr, I didn't hear Renee Reed vote. I want to make sure we're clear on that.
Okay, I said aye.
And I'm not sure you heard mine either, so aye. Okay, now we need to talk about the authorization of signatures in the absence of the superintendent. I believe Dr. Scheichel has some information about this.
Yes, we have a document in your materials. It's also publicly visible. This is a document that authorizes Dr. Aldifer, Assistant Superintendent of Leadership and Academic Support, and Cheryl Mast, Chief Financial Officer, to sign all VDOE reports, documents, requisitions, and other official correspondence in the absence of the superintendent through June 30, 2022. And I recommend approval of this authorization. This is an annual authorization to DOE.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, we're going to, we have salary scales by Ms. Mast.
Vice Chair Lohr, members of the board, and Dr. Scheichel, for your approval this evening are the 21-22 salary scales. All employees paid off of these scales received at least a 3% pay raise. As you know, the teacher assistant scale and the behavior assistant scale received more than that, and it was a focus of the budget process in the last few months. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from Ms. Mast?
If there are no questions, I recommend approval of the salary scales as presented.
We have a recommendation by the superintendent. Is there a motion?
A move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the salary scales for fiscal year 2022 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Mast. And thank you for all of your work on that. And next on the agenda, we have the MTC surplus property for auction. Mr. Kevin Hutton?
Thank you, Vice Chairman Lohr, members of the board, Dr. Scheichel. Thank you all for allowing me to come this evening. In your packet today, you received a list for our surplus auction at MTC. We'd like to hold it on May the 20th at 5:00 p.m. The list is kind of extensive. This is two years of surplus and material since we were not able to have the auction last year. We are excited. If you notice in the list, we're trying something new this year. Our building management students built a 192-square-foot tiny home, and we're excited to see its success and how it will be auctioned off. So if I could, please get a recommendation to approve this list for our surplus auction on May the 20th.
I do recommend approval of the surplus auction list as presented by Mr. Hutton.
We have a recommendation. Sorry, what?
Is that there's some interesting items in there?
Yes, there are.
There are?
Yep.
We, we have a recommendation by the superintendent. Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the Massanatan Technical Center list of surplus property for auction on May the 20th.
Thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? Will this, this will be a live auction, Donald?
Yes, ma'am. It will be a live auction by Green Valley Auction with Greg Evans as the auctioneer.
Oh, great. Any further questions? Hearing no more, no further discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, and MTC is looking forward to hosting the next board meeting on May 24th, so we'll see you then.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is school lunch hero day. Mr. Lehman?
Thank you, Vice Chair Lohr and members of the board, Dr. Scheichel. Last Friday was school lunch hero day, and during normal times, this recognition was well deserved because of the countless hours and dedication to the provision of healthy school meals. And then, of course, during this last year, it was quite different. The food nutrition service staff dedication these last 14 months has really been short, nothing short of amazing in, in my view. As you may recall, our first day of Miss School was Friday, March 13, and then four days later, two staff members from nine schools met me just outside here in the parking lot, where we drafted our plan to begin feeding kids on March 18. So we've had over 19,000 meals during those first 10 days until the end of March. And then the food nutrition service staff, of course, were on the front line, serving meals every week from March 18 until the end of July. Many jobs kind of gave the opportunity for people to work from home, but not preparing food. So our staff prepared about 210,000 meals during that time, and, and one thing also is very unusual, is none of those were consumed at school. So our staff was quite adept at learning new skills, and of course, that was very different for, for them, and they prepared meals to go. And then, of course, beginning of September, when some of our students came back, we resumed our in-school feeding, and we prepared bag meals for the students that were not there for, on the days that they were not there, and then, of course, provided food for all the rest of them that were not in our building. So since September, we prepared and served over a million meals, and our staff is now glad to have many of these students back. This gives them the opportunity to interact with them as they come through the line and as we see them at school. And then each school really has had some unique serving modalities, you know, during, you know, during this time, and our staff is, I believe, remained very flexible in, in, in doing that. So last week, when I went to every school, I did tell them that they are my heroes, and actually through the spring, that was one of my favorite comments to them, and they started laughing about it. And then when I failed to say it, they looked for that comment. But anyhow, I do want to thank you for your support and encouragement of, of our staff during this time.
Thank you, and thank you to your staff. I've seen multiple Facebook posts about how this program has helped and, and the enthusiasm of your staff, always providing meals. It's, it's astounding. They are heroes. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I want to. Yeah, I want to extend that as well. Jerry, that doesn't happen in isolation, in a vacuum, right? We use the term hero so loosely, and I like to use it when people do something where they go one way when everyone else is running the other way. And even though the state was locked down and we weren't allowed to, or suggested that we don't leave our homes, your staff were out there giving meals to the entire community. And I was able to come to some of those at Pleasant Valley, and there wasn't even a question, right? They were there, and they had meals ready for the entire community, whether someone was a student here or not, and they were ready. So, and that's your leadership as well, right? So that term applies to you just as much. So thank you for everything you've done, and, you know, we'll celebrate your retirement when we have the right chance, because you've done this for a long, long time, and that won't ever be forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you, I believe, Dr. Scheichel. We're ready for your COVID update.
And Ms. Reed had previously said, you know, let's cut back on those. And so I took the advantage when she was out of town to put another COVID update in. Snuck that in at the last minute. And that's just some important pieces of information to share. And some of them will address the questions that have been raised, right? Because those are legitimate questions. Everyone wants to know what happens next year. And I also want to say, you know, that during this entire crisis, we have been a little bit unique in that we haven't always just strictly stuck to CDC and VDH recommendations, when there were recommendations. We looked at the data if we felt justified to go in a different direction than we did. But there are also limits that everyone has to recognize. So as a public school division, you know, if there's a recommendation from the Virginia Department of Health, I can say, you know, that doesn't align with the data we've seen, and as a result, we can do something different. When it's an executive order or law, it's a different story. So there are two different ways we have to approach that, and I just want to make that clear, because I'll talk a little bit about that. We can't just violate law. We can use our own judgment when it comes to recommendations. And so you'll see that in the presentation as well. So when we look at the data, as of May 10, Rockingham County really aligns well with many of the other school divisions, particularly on the western side of Virginia. We're in person, we're in person four days a week, but we're in person. All students who selected to be in the hybrid model were allowed to come back in person for the rest of the semester. And so we increased everything to four days. And because we did go to three-foot distancing, once we knew that the data supported that, and it was before VDH or CDC actually gave that recommendation, because we'd seen it everywhere else, and we'd shown the data that with masks and three-foot distancing, students and staff would be safe. When we look at the case data, this was back in January, right? So remember that, as an entire state, where there wasn't a single place that wasn't in red, meaning more than 200 new cases per 100,000 population for 14 days. And we went as high as 1,200. And when you look at deaths and hospitalizations, now, over the course of a month, you know, we lost dozens of people in the course of a month during those times. And that changed a little bit. So February 27, we were back in orange. And at that point, it was a seven-day count, which is just half of that, 100 cases. But we were going in the right direction at that point. There were still a lot of communities that went red. And if you look as of now, we're still in orange, but it's a different level. So if you look at 100 being red, 50 is where orange begins. Below that is the second lowest level, which is yellow. And that starts at 49.9. We're at 51.7, I believe, right now. So 51, 52. We had one single day in yellow already prior to the spike over Easter, but we're trending in the right direction, as is most of the state. But you still see there are some that are still in red. And we went back up to red after that yellow because of the Easter spike. And so if you look at these, you know, colors, it used to be a slightly different system with one extra level. But these are now, again, high, substantial transmission, moderate, and low. And again, we're trending in the right direction. This is the Rockingham data for the last three weeks. So we've had a total of 6,737 cases in Rockingham County. And if you look at new cases, you see that broken down by weeks. The first, you know, three weeks ago, you saw, you know, 10, 21, 11 in there. The following week, 10 and a 22. That's what's still pushing that 14-day count high. And the reason why it's actually 54 as of today, 52.9 yesterday, 51.7 a couple of days ago. So we're right there at that 50 level. And again, in two days, 11 will drop off, the 10 will drop off after that. But we've had some good days over the last five days, 1, 5, 4, and 5, and that 10 in there. Again, that will hopefully change as these numbers come down. And I will say that statewide, there were only 336 cases, I believe, in Virginia today, which is the lowest level since last April, because it was more than a year ago. There's not been a day with only 336 cases or fewer in Virginia over the course of this last year. So we are going in the right direction, no question about it. And if you want to look at it as a graph, you can see that. You see all the spikes, or the first spike, and then that second wave, and then over the winter holidays, you can see how high that went, almost to 1,200. It was 1,166, I think, was the high point. And then back down, a couple more bumps again. The last one after Easter, again, there was a little bit of a delay when social gatherings happened, where people aren't masked. And now it's trending down. And worldwide, we see it when we look at other countries. Israel has the highest vaccination rate, and they've been able to bring those numbers down. Many European countries that are way behind in vaccinations are still, some of them are locked down. Austria, for example, similar population as Virginia, for the first time in seven months, went below 1,000 cases today. But that's a lockdown situation, right? So April 19, I believe, they'll reopen to some extent. So this isn't a Virginia issue, it's not a United States issue. It's been global. The countries that show really low numbers, like Iran, there are all kinds of evidence that those are simply manufactured numbers. But across the world, you know, this is a different process, right? And so when the numbers are that high, you see in India what happens, right? So overall, hospitals. And again, in Virginia, we're doing pretty well now. But again, you can look at where we were. So physical distancing and masks, and one of the questions was about masks. We talked about this the last time I did an update. This was, you know, quite a while ago. And we looked at the scientific research that was done by the Mayo Clinic. So, you know, it's not a government agency. This is a highly reputable hospital. And they looked at different distances, types of masks, and how particles can get across. We also watched, you know, the Uncle Rob video that's pretty intuitive, when he uses lighter fluid, a starter fluid, and a spray that had masks with a torch in between. And you could see at what point it caught fire when there was a mask. The particles are the same, even smaller than the ones that carry COVID. And so it's a pretty intuitive video. It's funny, too, but it made the point, right? And so we're not going to watch that, because that's already, we've talked about that. But just as a reminder of how we came to this, teaching touching surfaces and vaccines. So the first piece that we changed after the board meeting, when I presented this information, we changed it the day after, March 9. Had to do with touching surfaces. We also talked about teachers. How risky is it to have a student who tests positive in your classroom? Again, across the country, there are different approaches to this. Many states went to three feet earlier than the CDC allowed and that Virginia allowed. But in the vast majority of states, in classrooms, because of the number of students, masks have been required. Again, some states changed that recently. But certainly, again, we always look at what the science shows, not just what we intuitively feel like, but what does the data actually show? And so if proper mitigation is practiced, masking, vast majority of children and adults in a classroom have remained unaffected. And again, they pointed to that same Mayo Clinic research. This was the American Academy of Pediatrics, who recommended that we go to three feet and bring more kids back. And so really, we worked with the pediatricians just as much as with, you know, CDC and VDH guidance. But the pediatricians pushed for more kids to come back. You know, we talked a lot about what the impacts on kids are, what the impact on kids has been. And so because of the pediatricians, we took those steps, right? Once they had the information for us. Harvard School of Public Health talked about this, what they call hygiene theater. So we had early indications that this can be transmitted through touching surfaces because of SARS-1, you know, that happened more than a decade ago. It was easily transmitted through touching something that someone else had touched. And that was the best information at the time. And so as they reviewed cases, they found that that's not a likely transmission vector. And so as a result, the day after that board meeting, we opened all the playgrounds and said, you know, use hand sanitizer, whatever, but you can be on the playground again. And so again, you look at CDC guidance and VDH guidance, there's still kind of that restriction on, be careful with playgrounds and touching surfaces. But the evidence just doesn't point to that as much, and so we made the change. The vaccine, again, highly successful in places where lots of people are vaccinated, except with some limits. There's a Chinese vaccine that's been used in some countries, and that is not based on the messenger RNA technology that Pfizer and Moderna use. That's more of a traditional vaccine. It's much less effective, and it's not effective against the variants. And so that's why in countries that use that, they've seen tremendous spikes again. Countries in Europe, and again, Israel and the United States, where the vaccine is widely available and used, have seen dramatic decreases in case numbers. I was in Austria when COVID hit there to visit my mom, and three weeks later, it hit here. So there was always kind of this almost three-week, one-month time lag, and you could see it all the time. And because of the variants, being there first, then through travel, you know, it gets here. And the first time that that trend changed was when the vaccine became available, because it was much more widely available in the United States than it was in Europe. So European countries are way behind. In Virginia, 50% of eligible people have received at least one dose. In many European countries, they won't reach 20% fully vaccinated by the end of the year. So they have much more restrictive environments still. So in Virginia, it was phased right early on. It was hospital staff and first responders. But there's been a tremendous increase in available vaccine. And now that so many people have been fully vaccinated, it's also slowing down the need for those groups since it's available basically right now to anyone who wants it. The number, we have the vaccine available when people need it. And we have let families that have someone 16 years or older know about clinics at the fairgrounds, clinics at JMU. And VDH will also hold some clinics in our buildings, where students who want the vaccine, or the families want it with parent permission, can get it. We don't know, you know, if someone doesn't get it there. We really have no idea whether they already got it, whether they're getting it at CVS. You can get it anywhere. And so it's just another opportunity, because what we find is many families with the jobs they work, the hours that are available at the fairgrounds, they're not conducive for them to then also take the kids. Because at the fairgrounds, you have to be there physically. But with school, VDH has a permission form that parents can authorize the vaccination through VDH. And so that's just another opportunity for families that want it. The vaccine isn't mandatory. It's currently under emergency youth authorization. So, you know, that's a completely different story. And as of today, just a few hours ago, the Food and Drug Administration also authorized it for use in anyone 12 years and up. So that's the next stage. It always works that way. The clinical trials were done on adults, because the oldest age groups were most susceptible to the most severe outcomes. Bonnie Munger, you know, is an example of someone in a high-risk group being infected, right? And so, you know, her family has talked about that, and in the school death in conversations. And it's why the vaccine was first made available to those in the high-risk groups. And in the age group of 65 and above, I believe, 80% have at least received one shot. And then, so the numbers are really, really high. And again, it's prevented some of the worst outcomes. But then the clinical trials had to focus on that early on. Then the clinical trials, as soon as that was authorized, focused on the next age group, which was 12 to 15, because Pfizer was initially available 16 and up. And then, once those clinical trials went through all the phases and the FDA approved it, now Pfizer will run the clinical trials for the youngest children. It's never done without clinical trials, without the study of all the phases, so safety and side effects and all the other things. And it's expected that Pfizer will have a vaccine available for two years and up by September. So according to the company, when they announced that this week it might be 15 and up, then it might be 2 and up in September. So the question you raised earlier, whether we will mandate the vaccine. Vaccines aren't mandated by the individual school division. So in Virginia, state code basically lists which vaccines are required. So you have to get your, you know, measles, mumps, rubella shot. You get all these other shots that you have for school entrance. And then at different age groups, there are some additional vaccines that are required. And so that's not something we will decide. If anything, that would be decided by the General Assembly and by VDH. So we would be mandated, it could be, I'm not saying it will be, right? It could be mandated like the measles shot. So for all vaccines, though, there are medical exceptions, there are religious exemptions. There are always these recognitions of what families choose. But making a vaccine mandatory is not something Rockingham County Public Schools will say, hey, we're going to make it mandatory. That would become a state law. Well, again, with a measles shot, that's a parental choice. Again, there are options available by law, right? And that's all I'd have to point you to. As a school division, we would be required, for example, this, I can give one example. This year, a lot of students, because pediatrician's offices were closed, couldn't really get their measles, mumps, rubella shot potentially in time for next school year to enter school. And the Virginia Department of Education made it very clear that the vaccination requirements have not changed. So there has to be some way for the family, whether it's through VDH clinics, like often happen, or, again, the vaccine being made available at pediatricians over the summer. We do not have the authority to simply say, oh, but in Rockingham, you don't have to have it. It's state law, and so that we would have to follow. Masks, as you may have heard, by June 15, Governor Northam has announced that he expects if the data trends to continue, that the restrictions on distancing and the restrictions on a crowd size will be lifted. So the six-foot distancing for adults at sporting events, you know, that only certain number of people can be, let's say, at a high school football game, those will all be reconsidered on June 15, and is the expectation, if the trends continue, that those will be lifted. However, Governor Northam also said that mask requirements will be considered based on CDC guidance. Masks are tricky in Virginia and in many other states, because there's actually state law that says you're not allowed to wear masks in Virginia, right? So that's state law. Because when people are protesting and they just put a mask on, you really have no way of knowing who did what, right? If you're out in public and someone gets injured, and they say, oh, it was, you know, so-and-so with a mask, no one can really be as certain, you know, who that was. So there's state law in Virginia, as in many states, that prohibits the wearing of masks. However, the governor does have the authority, when a medical emergency exists, to mandate masks for public health reasons. And so what the question will be is whether the numbers that exist in June, or for us, more importantly, in August, right, when school starts again, whether those public health numbers give the governor the authority to mandate masks. So with masks, we operate under different rules than you do when you're out in public. So in Virginia, you know, if you're out in public and... So in Virginia, you know, if you're out in public and Governor Northam announced, you know, that when you're outside, people, for example, who are fully vaccinated, don't need to wear their mask, because again, it doesn't spread outside quite as much or hardly at all if you're not close to each other because of the airflow, whatever the different factors are that play into it. But indoors, employees at their place of work are required by executive order to wear a mask. And so for us, Executive Order 72 currently is still in effect. And that says employees at their place of work have to wear a mask. And so again, there are legal restrictions on what we can do. But I will tell you that, and again, currently no vaccine requirement. I want, I want to make that clear again. There are things we do that aren't related to taking their masks off because for that right now, regulations about how close students can be in a classroom simply only exist when masks are in play. And it goes beyond just what we think is the right thing. You have to remember that if we say, you know what, everyone take their masks off and something happens as a result of it, we could face a lawsuit, right, as a school division. So there are rules about that, what a court would consider. And what we would have to show is that we were not grossly negligent. And we've had conversations with our board attorney, of course, and with legislators, with people across the state and other school divisions. And when the recommendation is to only be at three feet when masks are worn, and then we say, you know what, we'll just take them off anyway, then we may not be able to defend against the lawsuit if something does happen, right? So those are some of the legal implications that you also have to consider. And so can I tell you what school will be like in the fall? I can tell you what I expect it to be like. And that is one, that five days a week, all students will return in our schools by the fall. I can tell you that. When we look at playgrounds, right, we already changed that. We said outside, plenty of evidence, it doesn't transmit through these touch surfaces and playgrounds are outside, we can open that. We also changed how we handle quarantines. So the research has shown that at three feet with masks, it is safe to be in a classroom. What has not changed is the definition of a quarantine. So when a student in the classroom tests positive, it's a six foot radius all of a sudden. So at six feet, while it's safe at three feet with a mask, once we find out that this asymptomatic student has COVID, now we need to quarantine kids all around that student at six feet. And so what that has led to is since April 12th, I can give you the numbers, we've quarantined more than 200 students purely for being within six feet, when the recommendations at the same time also say that three feet are safe with masks, right? So it's inconsistent. And so a change that we announced just today to our schools was that what we are legally responsible for, and again, I have to again, point to our legal responsibilities, is to let VDH know when there's an outbreak. So two students test positive, well, two staff members, a student and a staff member, and the two are connected. So there's indication that one gave it to the other. Other than that, contact tracing and quarantine is a VDH responsibility and we will let VDH do their job. So if masks are worn and three feet distancing exists, we won't send those kids home anymore. We followed up on the 200 kids, 191 over the first few weeks and not one tested positive as a result, right? Because either it is safe at three feet with masks or it isn't. And if it is, then the students shouldn't be sent home. Teachers have to send homework assignments home. The kids are not back in the building. And so I do want to point to that, that when the data show us, we can go beyond those recommendations because they're not legal obligations in that case, we do it. But masks and vaccine can be mandatory based on a number of factors. So if you're asking whether I can guarantee you that kids will be back without masks and that the vaccine will not be mandated, I can't tell you that because we operate as a public school division within the law and within the executive orders because it's also, you know, our school division is funded to a significant extent by state funds. And so that comes with requirements to follow certain rules. And so are we pushing whenever we have the information that we need that comes from reputable scientific organizations? Absolutely we are, and this is one of those cases. But just as we couldn't promise last year what the fall would look like, I can't promise you what it will look like, but I promise you that within the rules that we operate under, we will do what reputable scientific organizations such as the Mayo Clinic or the American Academy of Pediatrics or Harvard Public Health recommend is safe. So that's all I can say because I don't have the authority to just do something that's not legal, right? If I think, because I grew up in Europe and I drove 100 miles an hour on the interstate there, because there's no speed limit, I can't just come here and say, you know what, to the Virginia State Police when they pull me over going 95, hey, I promise you it's safe. I've done it my whole life in another country. They might say, oh, good for you, you know, I wish I could drive 100 miles an hour, but that's just not how it works. So I'll still go to court and I'll still be held responsible. And so I have to operate as superintendent and we as a school division have to operate now within the legal limits. But when we have information that tells us we can do something else and it's, and it's at least permissible, then, then we do follow that. So we don't just do whatever we're told, right, in terms of guidelines. So that's really the answer. I can give you, this is basically just a summary of the quarantine. There's a clear inconsistency and we pointed out, I've spoken to First Lady Northam when she was here for a visit at Mountain View, to the Secretary of Education. We've sent the information and wanted the data. And since we haven't been able to at least have the recommendations changed, we basically just asked what our legal obligations are and that's, and that's where our limits are. So we're not going to violate the law and we're not going to violate the guidelines that come from independent research organizations that do this for a living. So that's what I would say about that. And to the board members, any questions you may have on that? But I did want to, again, we had had individual conversations, but I did want to make clear that we are making a change effective today. It also means that students are quarantined for a simple close contact, like within six feet. But if three feet and masks were part of the equations, if our rules were followed, those students can return as of tomorrow. So schools have notified the families because we do have plenty of evidence that it is safe.
Board members' questions? Ms. Reed?
Uh, I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you know, I love you to pull out your crystal ball and tell me what you think. It's crystal ball time. Okay, so the current thinking is that it won't be approved, that we won't have another approval for the Pfizer vaccine until September. So the youngest through the summer will be age 12. That's what our crystal ball is.
Yes, that's the current thinking, right? Unless Moderna trials, you know, come to a different conclusion for their vaccine. It's similar to Pfizer, but again, it's always based on what the clinical trials are. And as far as I know, well, obviously Pfizer is now starting the clinical trials on the youngest kids and then age two and up. And then Moderna, I don't know exactly what the clinical trials are right now, but I believe it's the same age groups. So they always do it in a couple of stages because the immune system of a three year old is different from the immune system of a 50 year old. So they do want to make sure that, you know, you're not just changing the dose, there's simply changes also in, you know, what proteins are interacting with others. And, you know, since this is based on a very specific technology about that spike protein on the, on the coronavirus, you know, they have to make sure that it meets all the requirements. And again, emergency authorization really only means that it's done, that some stages, for example, happen simultaneously, especially in the older age groups, right? So normally you do phase one and you wait, you study that, you do phase two, you wait, you study that, you do phase three, then you have some additional time where there are all these additional reviews. But none of the safety protocols in this case were any different and the phases weren't different. It's just they were done, some of them were done simultaneously, which is only a risk really for those participating because if phase two isn't done yet and phase three is already happening, they just rain dose simultaneously. So the vaccine itself wasn't really approved in a, with different phases, they were just timed differently. And so the FDA has to consider whether to make it, whether to approve the vaccine rather than use emergency youth authorization. And so at this point, the expectation is yes, for the summer it'll be 12 and up. And then indications are in the fall, it might be two and up. But again, that all depends on the clinical trials.
And then for it to be required for the schools, it has to go through the legislative process?
That's our understanding, yes. There, there are lots of questions about this. You know, private employers, of course, can do different things. So you see some private universities mandating it. Private employer always handles these things differently. You know, there's just different rules in place. But for public institutions, my understanding is that not only would it have to be approved rather than emergency authorization, but it also in Virginia, it goes through state code.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. To the public, you know, for the questions, you can contact my office if you have other, you know, topics that you want to have conversations about, but I thought at least I could address, you know, these pieces here. Because again, doing public comment, it's, it's just comment and not a back and forth. So I hope that helps a little bit.
Board members, you have the financial review in your packets for your analysis. And next on the agenda is school board questions. I will start with Mrs. Reed this time.
Thank you, Ms. Lor, I appreciate it. One quick thing, board members, I know Ms. Bochak and I reached out to you regarding retreat in, probably in June. If you haven't had a chance to respond to her, if you would, as she looks for a date, I think, and if you have any suggestions for topics, if you would email those to me directly, I would appreciate it. We have some things that we probably want to talk a little bit about, such as growth, a new roadmap for the direction of Rockingham County schools as we get past the pandemic and a few other things. So if you could just let Ms. Bochak know about your availability and then reach out to me directly about any topics or you can reach out to Dr. Schikele too, that would be terrific. I'd greatly appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Breeden?
Renee, best of luck in your work there and give our best to your mom.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden.
Thank you. Dr. McQuilkin?
Pass.
Mr. Falk?
I'll pass as well, thank you.
Thank you. I do have one question for Dr. Schikele. Where are we at with the Lacy's or Linville Edum system?
Good question. In order to use the clean water discharge into the land, we have to have an easement. And so there are ongoing conversations with the landowner and, but the planning for the actual system that may be used are at a very good stage where if those easements happen, then we can move forward with sending the design in for approval. So we're getting there.
Great, thank you. Because next year, we're going five days a week. We're gonna need a sewer system, right? Thank you. We now have reason to move into closed session. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider personnel, specific public officers, appointees or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary or resignation.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do we have any discussion? Quickly, before we go into closed session, I would like to thank everyone for attending tonight. And definitely thank everyone for doing their part in these unprecedented times. We're just about there, folks. So thank you to everyone. Safe travels home. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, we're in closed session. Thank you all.